I'd like to welcome you to the extra planning board meeting of January 13th, the lucky 13, 2020. And begin with introducing the board members here this evening. To my far right is alternate Jen Martel. And regular member Gwen English. And, uh... Let's see, oh, Nico Papacostas. Our select board representative. Pete Cameron is next to him and I'm Langdon Plummer, chairman of the board. Pete, ask Pete, yeah. Aaron Brown to my left.
This is gonna be a long night.
He got my name right tonight.
We can't get anybody else right.
Almost made it. John Gruder. And Kelly Bergeron, regular member. So, oh, town planner Dave Sharpos is with us, as is our recording secretary Dan Holger. Okay. Minutes of January 23rd is first on the agenda, so I'd ask the board to take a look at those and... Any comments?
Gwen?
Gwen. Gotta get the editors.
I'll go if you want.
I'll go then. We'll do it at the end of the moment, Nicole.
Should we go page by page? Line 36 and 37. I think it would, I think it's important to cite what the 35 foot to 50 foot means. And just somewhere in there indicate that that's the building height.
Okay.
Otherwise, it could be anything but...
Could be setbacks.
Setbacks or something. No, we don't. That's all I had on the first page.
Oh.
Did you have anything, Pete?
Yes.
Okay.
I think the committee needs to be identified there. It was a consensus of the committee. Which committee? I know what it is.
37.
Line 37?
37, I'm sorry.
This was the, um, the focus groups. I'm not sure what you would call it. The people that came to the roundtable discussions and that was what was meant by committee, if there's a better word for it.
Yeah, because it wasn't actually...
No, it wasn't actually a committee.
Wasn't the master plan oversight committee.
No.
That you were referencing.
No, I was referencing whatever. Open forums, there were.
Feedback that the consultant received, right?
Yes.
Or could you just put public input?
From the public.
Yeah, so change committee to public input.
Is that okay?
That's fine with me, I just didn't know, I didn't know what committee it was.
All right. Page two.
Who is, who is Fred A.? Line 46 and 52, Fred A. Can we, can we identify Fred? Yeah, Dan? And John inaudible.
I think that's John Richards, but I'm not positive.
Yeah, it's not the way I spell my name.
On line 53, um, I guess I'd... What is zero lot line situation?
53.
I don't know what that, I don't know what that is.
It's already tagged.
I think when you say that, zero lot line situation, it means buildings are right up to the property line.
Okay.
That's usually what...
Okay.
That's what I would take as.
Already has some zero lot lines.
Meaning, you know, the face of the building is the property line.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. On line 59, um... I think impact probab... I think that may have been meant to say input?
Yeah, I think you're right.
Oh. Oh. Pete?
72, excuse me, 72.
Okay.
Lot five will have 85 feet. Now, I think it's on Linden Street. The implication that it might be on Patricia Avenue, and I don't think it has the 85 feet on Patricia Avenue.
You're, you're right. It's Linden Street.
I think it's Linden Street.
Yes, no?
Where are we? Which line?
72.
Are we still fixing the...
72. Because lot five driveway goes to Linden Street.
Well, lot five doesn't have any frontage. So I don't know what they're talking about there.
Oh, okay.
Lot five doesn't have any frontage now. It's, it's accessed off a private driveway right away, but it's not, they don't own it. You know what I'm saying? So they don't have frontage on Linden Street.
Okay. Well, then...
Strike it?
Then that ought to be stricken.
Yeah.
Yeah, just, okay.
Don't have anything on the next page.
Okay.
Before we leave...
Page two?
Page two. Should the applicant's presenters be identified? There are later on, I think there are... Well, maybe the fact that it's, it's Mr. Winter and Mr. Boyd. Are those the present, excuse me, presenters? I think they are. But do they need to be identified as proponents?
I don't think so.
Okay, couldn't forget that.
I don't think we've done that before.
Now, before we leave page three then...
Okay, we're on three now.
I don't find that this was open to the public.
Uh-oh.
And I, I guess I have to question whether we need to say that. We say that on the next... If you go to lines 196 and 197, we identified Chairman Plummer opened the hearing to the public. And I'm wondering whether we have to have that demarcation on these minutes at that point. I don't know where the, I don't know when it was open.
Six, line 64?
64?
Well, that was continued to public hearing. But I was, I was concerned about opening it to the public.
Being open to the public, yeah.
I'm sure you may have done it.
Read the mandarin, yeah, I'm sure we did.
Well, then let's not worry about it.
Okay. Page four?
I don't have anything.
Nothing, okay. Pete, anybody else, by the way?
Well, I'm, I'm a little confused.
Okay.
213.
213, oh.
That's page six.
Okay.
It seems to me that the motion there was to approve something and it was not to accept it because we've already accepted it earlier. So I'm a little concerned with the use of the word "accept" there in 213 and "accept" in 237. Because we, in 237, it's clear that we didn't accept it subject to conditions of approval. We approved it subject to conditions of approval. I believe, Dave, am I wrong here?
But, well, 216, you withdrew it.
218, we, yeah.
Yeah, but 216... It should be to, motion to approve.
He's right.
Yeah, I, I think, I think the word "accept" should be approved.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay. That's it for me.
Pete Stekler has joined us. To far right in the evening. We're looking at the minutes, do you have any comments?
No, I, for being, I, all set.
Great.
Apologize for being late.
And I would accept...
Oh, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Line 167.
Which?
On line 160, oh, actually 165.
165.
I think I, I would just request that the, um, the, my intent in making this statement that ends with respects the fire department's decision. If it could just, if it just could go on to say to have a roadway circle this building for fire and safety, fire safety reasons. Just having it say respects the fire department's decision doesn't really explain what the decision was and that was that they wanted a road to go around that, around the building.
Okay.
And Mr. Chair, can you explain, I don't, 167 was a bit puzzling. Chair Plummer asked about occupants in separate parking area. Can you ex... maybe you, I wasn't sure what that was.
They're parking, as I recall, parking around the entire building.
Okay.
And where you have businesses.
Oh, okay.
And residents in the same, was, was, was that broken or designated?
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, that makes sense.
Yep, that's what I was curious about.
Okay.
And just, just one more thing, at line 199, I think I said that indicated that the town was looking for affordable housing. And Aaron asked me what I thought of the project.
Okay.
And that there, these 28 units had been approved before, that I was in favor of them.
Because an applicant was proposing.
Yeah, he was.
You're right, okay, yeah.
I just have one last one.
Okay.
Line 261 and line 263. I think it should be maintenance log and the completed log.
You said 263?
261 and 263. So instead of lot, it should be log?
Oh, yes. I...
And that's all I had.
Mr. Chair, I have one.
Yes.
Page one, board members present, if we could add Peter Stekler. He was here and he's referenced throughout the minutes, so if we could just add that he's a board member that was present.
Okay.
That's a good catch.
And with that, I will move to approve the planning board January 23rd, 2020 minutes.
Second.
Moved in second.
As changed or as amended.
As amended.
Okay, those in, in voting tonight as the board, because the board's here, so those in favor, please indicate, saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? They've been accepted, all right. Now, we have a continued public hearing on the application of IS Realty Trust for the proposed subdivision of an existing 5.58 acre parcel located at 100 Linden Street into five single-family lots and associated site improvements. And a wetlands conditional use permit for proposed impacts to the wetland buffer. Subject project property is situated in the R2, single-family residential zoning district. Tax map parcel 104-71, and it's case number 19-3. And I'd ask Dave to start off, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The applicant appeared before the planning board, January 23rd meeting, at your last meeting. And you tabled the application for several items. I was not in attendance at that meeting, but I watched the meeting and I got that the board wanted additional information regarding the landscaping. They wanted the rain garden detail. They wanted the lighting detail and photometric plan, and they wanted the sidewalk detail. They revised plans were submitted and are included in your packet. I note the plans did change, there was some discussion about two-inch caliper and caliper trees. The plans now show all three-inch caliper trees on the plans and the, two in each of the front yard and one in the center island. I think the one in the center island is a cherry tree. They provided, in the plans, they provided the rain garden detail, lighting detail, photometric plan. They did pick like an acorn-style lighting, I did email DPW about that because this is going to be proposed public road. I want to make sure they're okay with the fixture. I haven't heard back from them, but it would be a suggested condition of approval to whatever fixture goes on there is acceptable to the Exeter Department of Public Works. And they provided the sidewalk detail on the plans as well, and the sidewalk will continue and connect into the, where the existing sidewalk ends on Patricia. And the applicant, just to remind you, the applicant is requesting a waiver from section 7.4.10 of the Board's Site Plan Review and Subdivision Regulations that requires a high-intensity soil survey. And a waiver request letter dated January 20th, 2020 is disclosed. And in the event the board takes action on the application, I have come prepared with suggested conditions of approval.
Thank you. Christian, you ready or?
Not Christian.
As long as yours.
David, I'm not some winter. We got told that Henry Boyd wasn't going to make it at exactly 6:37 this afternoon, this evening.
Okay.
So Ian will try to answer those. They appear to be just housekeeping questions for the plans. As Dave noted, they were all addressed.
Okay.
Good evening, everybody. As you can see, you probably have looked at these plans a lot more than I have because I thought it was just going to be a little, little razzle-dazzle guy instead of actually talking to you about this. So, as you can see on page, page five, you can actually see the proposed rain garden as well as all of the three-inch trees. I don't know if everybody's on that yet. So to quell any fears from Ms. English, they are all three inches.
Thank you.
And for Ms. Martel, the species are actually listed in item number...
Seven.
Seven, thank you. So, of course, the first option is a red, red maple, we'll avoid that one, so. Other than that, the design of the rain garden is on page eight. And the light fixture with the light effects is on the last page. Which I believe is actually unnumbered.
E1.
I'll go with that one, sure.
Questions? Comments? Go ahead, Jen.
There was some conversation about some screening for the, I believe, the Hipkes property.
Yeah, well, again, because we haven't gotten into the lot, we're trying to save what can be there. The idea is to kind of essentially move lot one up as much as we can and then really work the, the rain garden into where it needs to be. And then there'll be growth in that, I mean, there's, on, I think it's page eight, it kind of, it kind of shows the, the planned flowers and the arrangements for that, whatever plantings may be. Yeah.
Sixty, sixty inches tall.
The rain garden plants aren't going to screen. Those are going to be low.
No, I mean, yeah, we're going to put screening back there, but there's no, we, we, you can't, you can't just jam a bunch of stuff in there because eventually it'll kill each other off. The plan is to put something back there, but we don't, there, there wasn't really room to put it in the plans as far as Henry was concerned.
Is, is there a note indicating that the property is to be screened?
I thought we already discussed that.
No, but I mean, a note on the draw.
I don't, again, I've, I've had about 27 minutes to look at this, so.
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay. I mean, I think that that, since that was discussed, I mean, had the property owner come out and reveal that, I think it would be good.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think a 30-foot tree is necessarily appropriate. But I do think, yeah, certainly first level blockage at least, give it a chance to grow into itself. There's, you know, there are some trees there, it's pretty barren. Obviously, right now with the winter, with any deciduous trees, you're going to lose any leaf screening that you have anyway. So as we move forward with the project, once we can figure out where everything goes, we'll find a safe distance to actually put the right trees for screening.
Yeah, I think just seeing a note that indicates that, you know...
Maybe that's why Henry ducked out.
Adequate screening has to be achieved with evergreen plantings as appropriate or something. It would be nice to include.
Okay.
Ken, what boundary are you talking about?
The...
It's lot one.
Lot one?
Along the rain garden boundary?
It'll actually, yeah, it'll be behind the...
Turning the corner.
Well, the, the Hipkes property kind of like wraps it, so I would say, I would say it's the corner that like, so... Southeast corner. Again, I don't know what's out there, you know, I haven't, I think it's, it's something that would have to be sort of...
We don't want to overpromise and put a bunch of stuff up here and then not be able to do it, so.
Yeah, and you don't want to do something that looks unnatural or, or like you said, is going to choke out whatever's there.
Gwen?
I have a question. Ian, I, I, thank you first of all for the three trees.
I didn't, I couldn't guarantee anything last time, but we were able to, we were able to go with it.
And I'm, I'm really happy that you put, well, by our regs, we had to put something in the, in the cul-de-sac, but I appreciate the tree there too, thank you. And I just have a question either for you and/or for Dave on the, on the Underwood Engineer comments. They're talking about the detention, oh, Dave's, sorry. On, on the grading plan, they're talking about the detention pond and the floor of the detention pond should be higher than the, than the ESHWT elevation of 44.9 feet. Does, is, it's been, the plan's been revised and it, and the bottom of the basin is now at elevation 45 feet. Is, did that, did that meet with everyone's approval? Is that cutting it close or is that fine? It's, it's at the very bottom of page two of five of the...
Yeah, the floor elevation is basically at it, is that what you're saying? It's at 45.0, 44.9. That, I mean, I don't get into... It's at 45.0, 44.9. That, I mean, I don't get into the review. I leave that to the engineers.
Okay.
And UEI is, is reviewing that, or has been reviewing that. I haven't gotten the latest letter from them. But as always, I suggest a condition of approval that, you know, they meet. But that's, that's, I leave that to the engineers to determine.
Okay. But that would be a condition? That would be in the condition of?
Yeah, that's always in the condition that the UEI Underwood Engineer Letter, the latest one dated October 28, 2009, 2019, would be addressed.
Okay.
And I, and does that go on the we're talking about slope stabilization in the drainage, and, and you've got, you're doing plantings in there. Is that, is that all that they need, or do they need other? Do they need a temporary screening or stabilization, like?
I'm not confused. Where are we talking about?
Um, this is on page three of five of the Millennium Engineering Notes from February 4.
On sheet three of five?
Yes.
There's 10 sheets.
Yep.
Sheet three of 10?
No, only five sheets.
Oh, ah, okay.
Eight and a half by 11.
So many papers.
Got it. What number are we talking about?
Um, the very top of the, oh, it's 18. The detention basin profile view and outlet structure detail, and it's like the third bullet down. They're just talking about slope stabilization, and it's questioned whether they need riprap or wetland plants, et cetera, and I'm just, they're putting wetland plants in, and I just didn't know if there needed to be riprap or anything else while the plants are taking hold.
That's...
Is that also an engineering? I don't know.
Yeah, that's what, they will review the response and see if it's adequate.
Okay, that's what I...
And require whatever they, they feel is needed.
Okay. Okay. I'm set for the moment. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Hi, Mr. Chair. I have a quick question about
Yes, Pete.
the the rain garden, and whether that's included in the operations and management plan for the homeowners association. I mean, I'm just concerned about...
That's not something that really requires a lot of maintenance. That would just be the responsibility of Lot 1.
And is it their responsibility to make sure it stays a rain? I, I guess my concern is, what if they don't let this ditch in their backyard, and some homeowner down the line says, I'm going to fill it in? As long as it's not a jurisdictional wetland, they'd have the right presumably to do that, and to maintain the protection to the butter that we're trying to do through this landowner, or through this rain garden. There'd be nice, it would be nice to have some guarantees that it's going to stay a rain garden.
Okay.
It's the same concern I have. Dave, in the past, when we've asked for a rain garden or something like that, that ends up on a private lot, what's the mechanism that we've utilized to ensure that that stays in perpetuity?
Well, in this case, it's going to have to be, they're going to have to create some sort of association, or the, there's a couple of different ways you can do it.
Yeah.
It's part of the conditions that, you know, all all easements and/or stormwater maintenance documents shall be submitted to the town plan for review and approval prior to signing. Final plans, in any event, the town planner deems that the review is needed by the town attorney, this review shall be at the applicant's expense. Plus, it's the stormwater maintenance requirement. As part of the final submission, the applicant should provide a signed copy of the commitment to maintenance requirements, and the notice of long-term inspection and maintenance manual, and the stormwater management report that they submitted, so.
So just add the rain, can you add the rain, including the rain garden on Lot 1? Is it really, though? Is that really part of the stormwater protection plan, or is it just?
Yeah, that's a stormwater system. I mean, I, I would expect it to be. I mean, I can, you know, make sure, just add it, just call it out, just to...
Maybe, I think so. Just because it, I think what Peter described could easily happen.
Okay.
Or somebody says, oh, I'd like a little more lawn here, you know what I mean? 10 years down the road.
Yeah, and it's tough to catch. It's tough to know, but it would be like the butter notifying us, we dig into the plans, and we certainly have the enforcement authority to make them, you know, put it back in.
Try to make sure the guy knows, or the home property owner really have it in their face.
Yeah, we talked about HOAs and stuff, but as far as maintenance, it would just be included in the HOA. It's pretty cut and dry.
It would be real helpful.
Yep.
Those things just get, as long, people generally, if they know about it, they're fine with it. You know what I mean? If they don't know about it, then they, yeah, it just gets...
If they understand, yes, you're right. Anything else from the board?
Anyone?
Yes. Go ahead, Pete.
I'm, this becomes important because I don't read plans as well as I should.
Well.
But let's go to
I can refer you to
um, three of 10.
We're back to, this is the plans, okay?
We're back on the plan. And that's the I think, my confusion is, where does, or how does the sewer extension coming from Lot 5 get tied into the rest of the sewer? I must be missing it, but I looked down, I have the, excuse me, the extension coming in from the other property on the, on the top, that's coming through Lot 4. But what I, and, and that gets tied into the main sewer line. But I don't see how the extension from Lot 5 gets tied in. Now, as I say, it may be my inability to read and understand these, but I, I can't, I don't see it.
It's on sheet six of 10.
Oh, all right, there we go.
The top, the top half shows the water in the sewer.
I S, yep.
Connections. The one from Lot 5 comes from sewer man, comes down on, through an easement, across Lot 3, dumps into sewer man hole number 3.
That's fine.
And you can see that easement in?
I, it's on there. I just never got, never went any further than
It's on 3.
I had the easement, but I didn't have it connecting in. I see that.
Yeah, okay.
But I didn't have it connecting in.
Right.
And now Dave has pointed out how it connects in, and that's fine.
Okay. You did a good job.
Walked all the way over here? Just make sure you guys are all all the way.
Who's ready to?
All right. Well, then, at this time, let me open the, the hearing to the public, so if someone would like to speak to this plan, proposal plan, please step to the microphone and introduce yourself, so Daniel can get your name and the record, and then share your thoughts with us. Anybody like to speak to this case? Seeing none, bring it back to the board. Any further discussion, thoughts, concerns? We have a waiver to deal with? I think, yes. Sure. Did you, do you have the materials on the waiver to make that request?
Try that again.
Can you read the waiver? Can you read the waiver request?
Can I read the waiver?
Yes.
I do not have a copy of the waiver.
Okay.
I'm sure our town planner will have it for you.
Yes.
Oh, where is it? It was dated January 20.
Okay.
My apologies again. I'm sure Henry has it in rhyme.
Well, make a note. We'll send you a little critique afterwards.
Well, if you approve it, then I don't have to look back for a while, so.
Well, that's true.
I don't think anybody, oh, we'll see what you guys have to say.
Who knows what other towns you're going to go to?
He's got talent. What's Simon, Simon? Ever seen that show? You don't know who Simon is? He's the guy who's been doing it forever. He's like, produces them now. One of the judges.
We'll let Dave come back anyway.
You're out.
Here we go. Isn't that in our?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's...
It's amateur, is it? Every once in a while.
It's in our packet.
That's what I'm thinking.
Should have been.
That makes me funny.
Spruce Street and Brett Wood Road, right around. No, this is not it. Put in the wrong bundle.
That stuff I don't get.
No, no, I gave you the wrong one.
Yeah.
We'll have it in a minute. We must have it on record. Otherwise
There it is.
Oh, see?
It's amazing.
You got it in your packets.
Yeah. Last night?
Last time.
Yeah.
Well, last.
Last time.
I believe, and I, and I referenced it to get in this memo, but it must have not gotten in there, because I didn't have it in mine, so.
So maybe the whole thing, or just the original version, or?
Well, probably the whole thing, to make sure the record is clear.
Members of the board...
We've been called on that before, and we're not going to be called again on that. Thank you.
On behalf of I S Realty Trust, we request the board's consideration for one waiver from the Site Plan Review and Subdivision Regulations for the Town of Exeter, New Hampshire. The requested waiver includes Section 7.4.10, a high-intensity soil survey of the entire site or appropriate portion thereof. Such soil surveys shall be prepared by a certified soil scientist in accordance with the standards established by the Rockingham County Conservation District. Any cover letters or explanatory data provided by the certified soil scientist shall be, should also be submitted. 1371, the granting of the waiver will not be detrimental to the public's safety, health, or welfare, or injurious, injurious to other people. Do I read the response as well?
Yes.
Okay, response.
Response, that's the question. You can answer. That's the...
Generally, the reason for H I S S mapping is to make sure that a property's soils can support septic systems. These lots will be on town sewer. In fact, the existing home will be tied to the sewer, eliminating the septic system on that site. Eliminating the septic system is an improvement to health and welfare. Article 1372, the conditions upon which the request for a waiver is based are unique to the property for which this waiver is sought, and are not applicable generally to other property. Response, we are proposing to connect to the town's sewer system and are not constructing any individual septic systems. Also, we are proposing to eliminate an existing septic system on Lot 5 to connect to the municipal sewer system. Article 1373, because of the particular physical surroundings, shape, or topographical conditions of the specific property involved, a particular hardship to the owner would result, as distinguished from a mere inconvenience if the strict letter of these regulations are carried out. Response, H I S S mapping will do nothing for the site. It will only cause delay in cost to the applicant. Article 1374, the granting of the waiver will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations, and response, because of the reasons stated above, especially the fact that there will be municipal sewer. Article 1375, the waiver will not in any manner vary the provisions of the zoning ordinance or master plan. Response, the waiver will not vary anything within the zoning ordinance or the master plan. If you have any questions or comments to the above, say them out, yes.
Thank you. Any comments, Aaron?
No. I'm ready to make a motion, but members of the board don't want to discuss the waiver further? I'm not sure.
Well, you can make the motion when you've got a second. I always answer further questions.
All right.
I'm, I'm open to the, to the motion.
Okay, then I'm going to make a motion regarding the High Intensity Soil Survey Waiver Motion. After reviewing the criteria for granting waivers, I move at the request of I S Realty Trust Planning Board Case Number 19-13 for a waiver from Section 7.4.10 of the Site Plan Review and Subdivision Regulations to provide High Intensity Soil Survey Information be approved.
Second. Moved in seconded. Is there any discussion? All right, let's go for a voice vote. So those people, board members, and again, it's the board that's voting. In favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Nays? Abstentions? The ayes have it. The waiver's been approved. Okay.
Mr. Boyd may be out of a job.
No?
Are you done?
Okay.
You may leave at any time, but we're not...
It's a voluntary thing.
Would you like to talk to Christian for a minute? Okay, now we have planning board motions. We took care of your wetland problem. So, would anybody like to make a motion regarding the contini, contin, continuing? Conditional, thank you. Use permit, wetland motion.
I'll do it.
Okay, Pete.
Once I get prepared with my glasses.
I'm ready, I can read any suggested conditions of approval.
Yeah, well, that, that, approved with the following conditions, and that's where you'll jump in.
All right.
Okay.
But after reviewing the criteria for a wetlands conditional use permit, I move at the request of I S Realty Trust for a conditional use permit, Case 19-13, be approved with the following conditions.
A second.
Is that the site plan and the conditional use, or just the?
Just the conditional use.
So the, the conditions go with the site plan, right?
Yeah.
I think you confused him on that.
Sorry. No conditions for the CUP.
He's going to tie the conditions to the next approved.
Okay. So, you end your motion with the word approved, rather than as amended?
You need to amend your motion.
Yeah.
All right, that's fine.
I move that the request of I S for subdivision approval, Case 19-13, be approved with the following conditions.
Second.
That's the subdivision approval motion. Excuse me.
However, there are no conditions to be added to that motion.
I thought David said...
Neither one have conditions?
Yes, the subdivision.
Okay.
I'm just confused. There's two motions now, one for CUP, one for...
Well, not exactly. I don't know what people have for supper tonight, but anyway.
There is no conditions to be applied to the conditional use permit.
That's correct.
We can grant the conditional use permit without conditions. If we deny the conditional use permit, we can deny it. But the subdivision is what Dave has made notes and conditions to, the conditional use permit. They're two different votes.
Yeah.
Okay. That go independently. So we have to have a proper motion for the conditional use permit.
All right, let's, let's, I will take my motion, and I will delete approved with the following conditions, and just say be approved.
Excellent, thank you. Does a seconder?
I will second that, again.
Good, okay. We now have a workable motion. Thank you very much, Pete. So, those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. Thank you for your help, Pete.
You're welcome.
You got to do the next one, because that one's got the conditions.
Right.
You're on a roller. Yes, I'm sure.
Tom Plummer said he's ready.
I move that the request of I S Realty, I S Realty Trust for subdivision approval, Case 19-13, be approved with the following conditions.
And I'll second.
I thought he was going to say something different.
Which are?
One, an electronic ass-built of the entirety of the property, with details acceptable to the town shall be provided prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. This plan must be in D W G or D F X file format, and an N A D 1983 State Plane, New Hampshire, F I P S 28 hundred free coordinates. Two, all monumentations shall be set prior to the issuance of the first certificate of occupancy. Three, pre-construction meeting shall be arranged by the applicant and is contracted with the town engineer prior to any site work commencing. The following must be submitted for review and approval prior to the pre-construction meeting. The stormwater pollution prevention plan, if applicable, be submitted to and reviewed for approval by DPW prior to the pre-construction meeting, to a project schedule and construction cost estimate. Four, all appropriate fees to be paid, including but not limited to sewer water connection fees, impact fees, and inspection fees, including third-party inspections prior to the issuance of a building permit or a certificate of occupancy, whichever is applicable. Five, all proposed public improvements shall be secured in accordance with Section 12 of the Site Plan Review and Subdivision Regulations. of site plan review and subdivision regulations. Six, all comments in the Underwood Engineer, Inc. review letter dated January twenty-fourth and the T R C comment letter dated October seventh, two thousand nineteen, and the letter from Genmates dated February twen- February third, two thousand twenty, and any subsequent comments as a result of that further review shall be addressed to the satisfaction of the town planner prior to signing the final plan. Seven, the inspection and maintenance log sheet in the storm water management report dated August first, two thousand nineteen shall be submitted to the town engineer annually on or before January thirty-first. This requirement shall be an ongoing condition of approval and noted in the homeowners association's bylaws and/or declaration where appropriate. Eight, as part of the final plan submission, the applicant shall provide a signed copy of the commitment to maintenance requirements and the notice of long-term inspection and maintenance manual in the storm water manager report dated August first, two thousand nineteen. Nine, all applicable state permit approval numbers shall be noted on the final plans. This shall. That's it. Ten, all easement and/or storm water maintenance documents shall be submitted to the town planner for review and approval prior to signing the final plans. The detention basin, rain garden, and all other storm water best management practices should be addressed in these documents. In the event the town planner deems that review is needed by the town attorney, this review shall be at the applicant's expense. Eleven, the limit of cut slash disturbance shall be flagged in the field prior to any site work, and these flags shall be maintained until a certificate of occupancy has been issued for all five units. Twelve, if determined applicable by the Exeter Department of Public Works, the applicant shall submit the land use and storm water management information tool about the project using the P T A P online municipal tracking tool. The P T A P submittal must be accepted by D P W prior to the pre-construction meeting. Thirteen, the applicant shall contact the code enforcement officer and deputy fire chief to determine the addresses of the units, and the proposed street light fixture shall be reviewed and approved by the Exeter Public Works Department. The one thing I heard that the, the planning board discussed that I did not include is something about the screening on, on lot one. I, I, I think you need to be specific.
I agree.
On what you're looking for there.
Yeah.
I'd avoid terms like adequate screening because I don't know, we've kind of had that discussion. That's tough to enforce what adequate to some may not be adequate to others, so.
I think we should make a suggestion for screening.
Mm-hmm.
If it's practical.
And sometimes we have that worked out between the, the abutters of that property line.
Yeah, I think when I, when I said adequate, I kind of was thinking it would be a sort of an agreement if it's sufficient to the abutter. Is that?
Doesn't always work well.
Generally allowing the applicant and the abutter to work something out, and they don't work out what happens. It brings the planning board back into it. I think, I mean, there is twenty feet along the rear property line that's going to be left undisturbed, and natural growth will come back, and then the rain garden's right there. Um, I'm not seeing a lot of opportunity on this plan for any type of further, I don't know what, you know, but I'm, I guess I'm just pointing it out that I didn't put it in there, and if you're going to, I'd be specific about what you, you're looking for there.
I mean, I feel like because it, you know, it was brought up at the last meeting, then it, I don't see why.
I think we all share your concern. I think we need to be specific with the condition.
I mean, I would say, you know, three eight-foot tall evergreen trees.
If practical, or just say do it. I mean, I can't, I can't imagine why you can't do it.
I mean, it's pretty cleared out there is my understanding, so I'm pretty sure that you could sneak those in.
Okay, that would be good.
Does that seem reasonable to the abutters? Okay. We try to, we try to handle this stuff at the board level to avoid potential difficulty down the road for all citizens, you know? So if that feels good, like it would be adequate, you know the line better than we do. You live there. Three eight-foot.
Evergreens.
Yeah, yeah.
The eight-foot, you know, so they stay.
Yeah.
Go to the town.
Right.
That seems appropriate and, you know.
It's not ridiculous.
Not ridiculous.
Yeah, great. It's a way to go.
So fifteen, three, eight-foot minimum height evergreen trees shall be shown on the final plans in the southeast corner of lot one parentheses near the rain garden.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay, are we all set with those? You seconded the motion, is that okay with you?
Yes. Did I second this?
I seconded the motion.
You did.
It's fine with me.
Is it, okay, thank you. Just sorry. All right, are we ready for the vote? And those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. You may go home now. Turn on the TV and watch the rest of the show. But get your popcorn ready first. All right.
And your sleeping mask.
Thank you, man.
Right, your sleeping mask. Come on.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
At this point in the meeting, I'm going to recuse myself from the rest of the items on the agenda as I.
Just inside my office.
Have a personal, um.
You're in the neighborhood.
I'm in the neighborhood, so.
Thank you very much.
To avoid any impropriety, I'm going to recuse myself from the rest of the.
Mr. Rogers.
And you may go over and watch.
She will be watching on TV. Guaranteed.
I'm going to go right home and put my feet up and watch, yes.
That'll put you to sleep.
Okay. You'll be back up at three.
I guess even at four.
Four, okay, all right.
All right.
Late night.
Late night.
Now.
Good to see you, Kelly.
Next item of the agenda, continued public hearing on the application of Harbor Street Limited Partnership for two lot line adjustments and subdivision of, subdivision of a four point nine six acre parcel into five single-family residential lots. Subject property is located off Brentwood Road and Spruce Street in the R two single-family residential zoning district, tax map parcel number sixty-three dash ninety-three and its case number nineteen dash eighteen. And Dave, would you start us off, please?
Okay, thank you. Uh, the applicant appeared before the planning board. It's December nineteenth meeting, and the application was tabled, uh, until January ninth. Then a, then a sidewalk, a sidewalk was held between, between then and December twenty-seventh. Uh, subsequently, the applicant was, has been requested to be continued and is now, um, has provided, due to, due to the, um, information requested by the abutters engineer that submitted a letter, I think that I read into the record, and they may have, they, they were on, on the sidewalk. And so that additional information regarding the drainage analysis was provided. Uh, there have been, uh, several emails back and forth that I was involved in, and they have come, the Michael Laham, the engineer, uh, representing one of the abutters, uh, has, is, is now satisfied with the, um, with the plan, but it's the latest plan because I just want to point you to us, you have passed out a new eleven by seventeen in front of you, and it's dated, uh, February eleventh, two thousand twenty, the latest revision date, and it's a utility and drainage plan. This utility and drainage plan supplants what you have in your plan set and got sent. Really, the, the only difference is on lot, um, what lot is that? Is that lot? Ninety-three five, okay, thanks. Yeah, lot ninety-three five. There was a, a little swale there, uh, that connects into a pipe, that discharges into a pipe that goes out into the drainage, uh, out on Spruce Street, uh, but that was extended around to the back corner of the house, and then the backyard is showing arrows, flow arrows to be graded to that because there was discovered there was a low spot there on ninety-three five behind the proposed house, and then that was ponding, and then in certain storms could overflow onto the abutters, uh, property. So in order to remedy or help actually alleviate that situation, uh, they came up with this design, and hopefully now it's taking, uh, it will be an improved situation, um, after this is constructed than what currently exists. The, um, the applicant is requesting one waiver from the board's site plan review and subdivision regulations for the requirement that the post-development peak flow rate not exceed that of the pre-development condition. They explain it, uh, in their, in their materials, and I'm sure they'll explain it, uh, again. I do have, if the board gets to that point tonight, I do have prepared suggestion conditions of approval, but I just wanted to point out something that I also gave to you. There's two, uh, I don't know for the lack of, ones, they're emails, but they're printed out on paper and they're hand-dated. One's dated twelve seventeen, two thousand nineteen. The other's dated twelve eighteen, two thousand nineteen. Do you have those?
Yes.
And there's some writing, it's a bullet, a bullet list on each of them, and then on the backside, there's a, uh, reference, you know, a, a plan that's marked up. Uh, these are agreements between the abutters and Mr. Falzoni. So they ask for those to be part of the planning board condition of approval and memorializing those, and when we get there, I'd be happy to explain them further, but this was nothing to do necessarily with the planning board. It was between the abutters and the, um, and the applicant, but I have no issue with including these as the planning board condition of approval as they are requested.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Floor is yours, Mr. Krebs.
Uh, good evening. My name is John Krebs. With me tonight is Christian Smith from Beals Associates, Mark Johnson, our attorney, and Joe Falzoni. Um, I don't really have a presentation for you. I can go through the plans. I think, I, I, I think I started this project when I was wearing shorts. Uh, it was, it was months and months ago, but as, as, as Dave said, this is a five-lot subdivision on almost five acres, two lots, uh, with frontage on, uh, Spruce Street, uh, and three lots have access over a driveway on Spruce Street, and two have access on Brentwood Road. I, I think that I'd rather just answer any questions that you have unless there's anything that you want specifically from me. I think subdivision has been pretty well fed by the board and certainly by the abutters. But if there's anything you want addressed, I can certainly do it for, I can do, I can do that.
Questions from the board? Gwen?
Parcel A and parcel B are being, those are going to, to the, to their respective abutters.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
While people are thinking, I'm going to ask Jen to be acting on this because one of our members stepped down. Thank you, Jen.
The, the existing, I don't, for lack of a better word, the trench that goes around the property, um, on Brentwood Road, that's just getting cleaned out.
That's correct.
It's not being deepened, nothing.
I mean, it might be deepened by six inches, Gwen, but, you know, because there's a lot of leaf litter and debris in it, but it's our intent, we can't go below the, the inlet of, of the culvert anyway, so.
Right.
Yes, it might go down.
That's okay.
Six or eight inches.
Probably good. Okay.
Yep.
That's what I thought. Thank you. Then you have two, um, um, oh, you have, does it, you have, um, oak trees noted on the plan, and a couple of them are to be removed, is that correct?
On lot five.
T B R, yeah.
Yes, yeah.
Okay. One of them is sort of isolated, what, why is that one being removed?
I, I can answer that. If you, you know, that, that whole area is the area of concern with the drainage with the abutter and the neighbor, and all that is going to have to be graded around to get into that swale.
Okay.
Um, so those, you know, if you want that to happen, uh, then those trees have to be removed to, to make that happen.
Okay.
To get, to drain that area.
As, as I think Dave, in his, in his, in his opening remarks, you know, lot, lot five was a difficult, the most difficult lot because of the concerns with the abutters, with the abutter, and, uh, and it requires the most, you know, careful drain, grading and drainage, so, you know, unfortunately, that's sort of where we're at.
Okay.
It was a balance.
Okay, thank you for answering that.
Pete, Peter, excuse me.
So, um, I'm just interested in the drainage analysis a little bit, um, because I, and maybe there is an outfit or a plan that shows which, which of the reaches are going in which direction, um, but can you give a, just a summary of, uh, where you're expecting to discharge additional water, um, in, in which direction?
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman, Christian Smith, engineer with Beals Associates. Um, so essentially, the way that the, uh, there, there were plans, Pete, um, if you did not get them, I can actually share them with you, and I think the proposed conditions would probably be the most useful. So essentially, we came up with five different locations, uh, which are the points of analysis. Those would be the reaches. The final reaches, one is obviously this culvert, uh, the second being the, uh, the little area here because the, the existing condition, there are, there is grading or topography that does lead down to Brentwood Road in that condition. Uh, there is another very small subcatchment that leads off in the direction, uh, of these two lots, which is ninety-one and ninety-two, and then another larger subcatchment which flows down toward the other, uh, Columbus Avenue, uh, residence, and then the final one would be the, uh, the catch basin in Spruce Street. And if you want me to go through how those are numbered, uh, this would be one hundred, two hundred would be the one to Columbus, three hundred would be the culvert, four hundred would be the, uh, the Brentwood roadside, and then five hundred would be the little right-of-way stuff.
And so you're increasing discharge to one hundred and five hundred, is that correct?
That's correct. And largely the increase to the catch basin, which is, which is shown as reach one hundred, uh, has largely to do with regrading that, that backyard on our proposed lot five and conveying that water away from the abutters and just getting it into the municipal system. And I believe, and Joe, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Falzoni has agreed to, uh, clean that basin. The good news about that basin is, is the head of that closed drainage system, so there's nothing upstream that flows into it, and it's, it's an extremely minor increase in flow in, in both conditions.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Got to change the batteries.
I have a follow-up question from Gwen's earlier question.
Sure, go ahead.
About the trees to be removed. Um, like one of them looks like it's on the fence at the, kind of at the, to, do not disturb line of that existing wetland, and I'm wondering, it's a twenty-two inch oak, um, it doesn't seem like a whole lot of grading, like it, it might be, you know, I guess I'm curious because it's hard to see that, we don't really know what the micrograding is happening there, but if it's, you know, some minor, um, removal of grade there, I think that that could probably be done carefully around the roots and stuff, the tree, and, and try to save it. I can understand the tree that's like right next to the proposed house, we'd have to go. We'd have to go, but, um, I guess what I'm thinking is like the one that's like right on that fence line.
That's not a fence line, that's, that a buffer line, you mean?
Yeah, the, um.
That's the silk fence.
The silk fence line, yeah. So you're not grading, you're not really grading there. I mean, it might be like super minor residual grading that's happening there. It's not like you're digging down an extra foot. So I guess I'm wondering if that one could be at least tried, if you could try to work around that one.
Because the twenty oak, twenty inch oaks remaining.
No, the twenty-two inch.
The twenty-two, I know, the twenty inches. It is, it's where they're grading, but they're gonna have to grade that area, but.
I mean, it's not in the swale. It's nowhere near the swale.
No, but see those flow arrows in the back?
Yeah.
They're going to have to slope, right now that slopes down toward the back property line. They're gonna have to slope that, these flow arrows are showing. They're grading it, so it's gonna get around into that swale.
Yeah, but what I'm.
That's not much to chase, you know, six, seven feet to try to get the grade to work out, to get, get it there. Because I, I'm pretty familiar with the spot grades in that area. But I'm not saying they can't do it, but.
Yeah, I mean.
You know.
Jen, can I make a commitment that we can try to save it without?
Yeah, I mean, there's a.
Obviously, you know, if it's not, if it's not gonna interfere with the house, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's not gonna interfere with the house.
Thank you.
I don't want to be yelled at. Uh, if it, I guess I would make this commitment that if we can save it, we will. And we'll make every effort to do it, but if it has to be, you know, if we get into the root system with, you know, when we're grading a lot, then it was the last thing I wanted is to die and fall on the house. So is that, is that fair?
I mean, roots, roots are gonna go as far as the crown of the tree goes, probably. It's an oak tree.
Yeah, definitely. You'll, you'll run into the roots of this tree when you're digging that swale, for sure. Because they probably extend out, you know, a hundred feet. But it's not gonna kill the tree. I mean, the tree's already right next to a wetland. It's in a saturated condition. I, I think it could probably, I, I'd like to see it, I'd like to see, yeah, an effort be made to work around it, rather than just saying, we're gonna chop this down first thing and then.
We'll, 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 we'll make an effort to, to save the tree, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. Takes a few years to get them that big. Any other questions? Well, while looking at that, let me open the floor to the public, please. So if you'd like to make comments about these plans as they stand this evening, please step forward and introduce yourself so that Dan can add that in the record.
Sir? I am Dan Hummel, and I'm the one that's causing all of these problems. And now my heart is breaking over a twenty-two inch oak tree. So I would just, if there's any way that that can be saved and, and less grading and there's more water on my property because of that, I'll just put that into public record that.
You want the tree.
Yeah, it would be. Um, and then I don't know if it's at all possible, but just hearing in this last one, something I've never thought about before, but as this home is going to be going in pretty close to, um, my property line, and somebody mentioned in the last discussion about just three evergreens to just as a buffer there. Boy, if that could be put in as well, I don't know if that's a possibility this late in the whole discussion, but that would be nice. And I'll, I'll give up, guys, if you can save trees, I'm in for it.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I, can you repeat what he just said? I'm asking, because I was right, I was right, I was taking care of that last one.
He asked for three trees similar to the previous case.
Oh, okay.
Just a little extra buffrage. And please save the oak tree.
And forget the drainage.
Forget the drainage, it's okay. He's gonna get ducked. Excuse me.
We'll make, we'll make two commitments here tonight. We'll, we'll, we'll revise the plans to show three, uh, I, five to seven, I don't know, five to seven or eight to nine foot, uh.
Evergreens.
Evergreens. You know, in, in, in a location that best screens this house from Mr. Hummel's house and that we'll try, make every effort to save that twenty-two inch oak.
Fine, thank you very much. Appreciate that. Anybody else want to speak? Seeing none, then I'll bring it back to the board. Have we got any more questions or concerns?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I haven't, I haven't had a chance to read the letters from the folks that are on Brentwood Road, but it appears that there's been a concerted effort to communicate with them and kind of have a friendly relationship with them. I, I, it appears that that's what's happened anyway. And I hope that that continues. That's quite a, this is a big change for them and whatever can be done to help them with noise. Is this, whatever happens down the road, but, um, noise and dust. And that's, that would be nice to honor their privacy and their living con, try to keep their living conditions tolerable as all of this is happening. So I'm glad to see that, as I said, I haven't read it yet, but I'm glad to see that you have worked with them. That's it.
Thank you. Well, Pete, I think there's a waiver request here.
I'm not gonna do it.
You're not gonna do it, okay. Well, you can't move it yet anyway.
Uh, Mr. Chair, can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
So I guess maybe Dave, I don't know who can answer this, but given that, uh, stormwater management's a big deal, um, and that this project's gonna be discharging more stormwater, um, to what my understanding is to the town's system, does the Public Works have, are they involved? I guess the question is, um, how much can our town system handle if, you know, through additional development, we get more, we already know we're getting more and more stormwater discharge because our rain events are greater and greater. Um, and, uh, you know, so what can our town system handle in terms of additional stormwater? I don't know if the applicant is prepared to answer that or if we have any sense, but it's, I think it's something we need to, uh, be careful about. I understand the, that it's a minimum increase, but the question is, if everybody has an in, minimum increase, what's the, what's the total impact over time? So that's my, that's my concern.
And Dave, I can at least give that a shot.
Yeah.
Um, those two locations, even at the outset of this, so prior to TRC, did show slight increases in stormwater runoff, simply because of, again, just trying to get water away from the abutters and in those, those directions. Um, I will say that, that all of the bioretention swales out there will provide some infiltration for stormwater. HydroCAD cannot effectively model that. So basically, the water getting into those swales just appears in the model as though it's running right down to the catch basin grate. That's not gonna be the case. A second point with regard to the existing catch basin on Spruce, uh, it's my understanding, and, and Mr. Hummel can correct me if, if this is incorrect, but I was speaking with our soil scientist and wetland scientist, and his theory is that that man-made ditch up there used to actually connect down to that catch basin. So that piece of it is really just restoring something that used to be in history and, you know, development of the Spruce Streets lot, Spruce Street lots or improvements on those lots, movement of soil has kind of eliminated a good deal of the ability for that to drain in that direction. Um, and, you know, again, that being at the, at the high side or the first basin in the run is, is a good thing. But, um, you know, with those small increases that were proposed at TRC, DPW was at the TRC meeting and they did not voice any huge objection that I heard. And Dave, you can correct me if you have that.
Yeah, that usually, I mean, anytime you tie into a public system, we're always concerned about capacity, whether it's sewer, water, drainage. We always ask those questions. Uh, you know, sometimes we ask for an analysis on the existing system. Uh, this was reviewed by our town engineer, I have to assume. I don't remember those specific conversations, but that's a, you know, that they, you know, were okay with the small CFS increase and knowing this area and, and the capacity of the system. Otherwise, it would get flagged. It has gotten flagged. A lot of times, people don't do that anymore. They, they keep their water on site, they don't tie into the system. But when they do, I assure you, it gets reviewed by the engineers for capacity issues, just like you said. It is important, you know. But I mean, I don't remember the specific conversations, but I'm sure they were aware of it and looked at it.
Thank you.
Good, good question, you know? Only put a quart of milk in a quart bottle, so.
Dave, do you have any comments on the agreements with the abutters?
No.
So you, you're satisfied?
They came up with agreements. I don't have a concern with you attaching it as conditions of approval if you so choose to do so.
Okay.
Aaron, normally, th- this would be between us and them.
Yeah.
But I think in fairness to the abutters, that, you know, we, they spent a lot of time trying to make sure that we didn't impact their, you know, their properties. We felt it was important to, that you, if you were willing to incorporate those into your approval, just so everybody knows that.
Yeah.
We're both, we're all working together.
Right. I got you. I get the intent, for sure.
Appreciate that.
I mean, all the difference it does is it gives us, myself, the authority to enforce these.
Right.
On, you know, with the, with the authority of the town behind it.
Right.
Which, okay, that's fine. If, I mean, the developer agrees, uh, it would be a better situation, you know, to get enforcement of this. If a, you know, future builder does, you know.
Yeah.
If they adhere to one, uh, we can, we definitely have leverage, COs and stuff like that, so we'll make sure it gets done.
Okay. Do you have a, I'm gonna ask for the waiver request unless there's other questions the board has. So are you gonna take care of waivers or is Christian gonna do that? You guys got double barrel here.
Oh, yeah. Uh, we respect, we, 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 I'm having your problem, Gwen. We respectfully request a waiver to subdivision regulations, section nine point three point one point eight and nine point three point four and five, which require the post-development peak flow rate not exceed that of the pre-development condition. We feel, feel that the waiver is justified as the two areas in question are very small property right-of-way access areas into the parcel that front on Spruce Street and Brentwood Road respectively. Both areas flow into municipal drainage structures and there is physically no areas to retain stormwater within the intersections, within the, within the existing roads. Bioretention slash dry swales are provided for each location for treatment and the Brentwood Road swell is proposed with an underdrain that will convey infiltrated stormwater to the existing drain, drain manhole just to the east of the entrance, which is not accounted for in the drainage model to, to yield, uh, to yield a conservative result. The increases in peak flows are de minimis, a point eight two CFS to Spruce Street and point two four CFS to Brentwood Road under a two-year storm event and two point seven eight CFS to Spruce Street and point five nine CFS to Brentwood Road under a fifty-year storm event. And stormwater volume increases are well below the maximum allowed, point one AF. Uh, and the increase, uh, to the catch basin at Spruce Street, at, at the Spruce Street entrance is largely due to the conveyance of water away from the abutting parcel, which is tax map sixty-three, lot eighty-six, as requested by the abutters engineer. Finally, these minor increases do not pose an adverse impact to the existing municipal closed drainage system.
Now, do these need to go through the five?
Yeah. Yeah, can you do that? Ken has that list.
Please.
The criteria.
How you get the thing then? Oh, you, you want, you want a copy of the five?
The five-tail test.
Yeah. One, two, three. Those aren't your responses.
I'm sure Henry did very nicely, but I won't copy them.
That would be nice.
Just keep them confused.
Yes.
Same as before.
Thirteen seven one, granting the waiver will not be detrimental to public safety, health or welfare, or injurious to other property. And I think we've described that by just how small these increases are. And, uh, you know, again, we did not hear that these, uh, these two areas are having inundated, you know, problems with inundation. Uh, and in fact, we're, you know, cleaning out the culvert upstream of the, of the Brentwood Road manhole as well.
Thank you.
Thirteen seven two, conditions upon which the request for waiver based are unique to the property for which the waiver sought and are not applicable generally to other property. And again, I think because we've got two areas that were created for, intended for right-of-way accesses into this parcel. And again, there's simply no room to get common drives and retention areas in those. Uh, you know, and to boot, the one at Spruce Street, you know, again, we're trying to mitigate a problem for one of our abutters. Um, so I believe that that, that is clearly met, um, and is unique to this parcel. Uh, seventeen, uh, excuse me, thirteen seven three, because of particular physical surrounding shape or topography conditions of the specific property involved, a particular hardship to the owner would result as distinguished from a mere inconvenience if the strict letter of these regulations were carried out. And again, I, I think that's clear because we would basically be, be having to put catch basins at the bottom of these right-of-ways, back-drain them uphill to create a place to detain and, uh, deal with them on site. With the water tables that we have out there, uh, it would be virtually impossible. And our only option for treatment, uh, beyond the swales, uh, having to do that back-drain situation chasing against the, the uphill slope would likely be, uh, open wet ponds, which with the mosquito situation, nobody is in favor of those. Seven, uh, thirteen, thirteen seven four, granting of the waiver will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations. Uh, and that is certainly not the case. Um, I, I don't see anything in the regulations that would, uh, you know, show, show this as contrary because it is such minor, minor flows. And the volumes, when you look at the volume increases, uh, it's even much less. Uh, thirteen seven five, the waiver will not in any manner vary from the provisions of the zoning ordinance or master plan. And, uh, this certainly doesn't. It's not referenced in the zoning ordinance or the master plan.
Thank you. I'm open to a motion.
To a motion, Jen.
John?
Long for the crowd tonight.
Yeah.
John's got it.
Stormwater management that we are, okay. Stormwater management standards for post-construction waiver motion. After reviewing the criteria for granting waivers, I move at the request of Harbor Street Limited Partnership Planning Board Case Number nineteen dash eighteen for a waiver from section nine point three point one point eight and section nine point three point four and five of the site review, of the site plan review and subdivision regulations regarding stormwater management requirements for the, uh, post-construction be approved.
Second.
Approved and seconded. Any discussion? And I'll go for voice, votes, not voice, vote. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Lot line adjustment motion. Yes. I move at the request of Harbor Street Limited Partnership Planning Board Case Number nineteen dash eighteen, the two lot line adjustments, approval be approved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions? Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. Subdivision motion. I move at the request of Harbor Street Limited Partnership Planning Board Case Number nineteen dash eighteen, the subdivision approval be approved.
With the following.
With the following conditions.
One, an electronic as-built of the entire property with details acceptable to town should be provided prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. This plan must be in DWG or DFX file format and in NAD nineteen eighty-three state plane, New Hampshire, FIPS twenty-eight hundred feet coordinates. Two, all monumentations shall be set prior to the issuance of the first certificate of occupancy. Three, a pre-construction meeting shall be arranged by the applicant and his contractor and the town engineer prior to any site work commencing. The following must be submitted for review and approval prior to the pre-construction meeting, the stormwater pollution prevention plan, if applicable, and a project schedule and construction cost estimate. Four, all appropriate fees to be paid included, but not limited to sewer water connection fees, impact fees and inspection fees, including third-party inspections prior to the issuance of a building permit or a certificate of occupancy, whichever is applicable. Five, the inspection and maintenance manual checklist included in the stormwater management BMP operation and maintenance plan dated one four twenty twenty shall be submitted to the town engineer annually on or before January thirty-first. This requirement shall be an ongoing condition of approval and noted in the homeowners association bylaws and/or declaration or the individual deeds where appropriate. Again, I'm not sure how legally they're gonna propose to take care of this drainage. take care of this drainage, but one of those ways will happen. Six, all easements and/or stormwater maintenance documents shall be submitted to the town planner for review and approval prior to signing the final plans. In the event the town planner deems that review is needed by the town attorney, this review shall be at the applicant's expense. Seven, all common improvements, including but not limited to utilities, drainage, and shared driveways shall be either completed to the satisfaction of the town or secured in accordance with section 12 of the site plan review and subdivision regulations prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for any unit. Eight, the final grades in stormwater management systems shown on the utility and drainage plan dated November 2019 with the latest revision date of 2/11/2020 shall be constructed in accordance with said plan and any changes in grading or any stormwater system shall require town and/or planning board approval in accordance with section 14 of the site plan review and subdivision regulations. Nine, the limit of cut disturbance shall be flagged in the field prior to any site work. And these flags shall be maintained until a certificate of occupancy has been issued for all five units. Ten, if determined applicable by the Exeter Department of Public Works, the applicant shall submit the land use and stormwater management information about the project using the PTAP online municipal tracking tool. The PTAP's middle must be accepted by DPW prior to the pre-construction meeting. Eleven, the applicant shall contact the code enforcement officer and the deputy fire chief to determine the addresses for the units. In the event the CEO and DFC, deputy fire chief and code enforcement officer, recommend naming either or both of the private driveways, the applicant shall follow the procedures on street naming in accordance with chapter 14. The street name shall be adopted prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for any units. Twelve, the seven bulleted conditions listed in an email with the handwritten date of 12/18/2019 and signed by Joseph Falzoni, Katie Marie LaMontagne, Daniel J. Tesnier, and James and Alexandra Allen and attached here to, shall be fully incorporated here and, and be conditions of approval. And let me just read those. I will attach this to it. But I wanna read those bulleted conditions that were agreed to by the applicants.
Yeah, please do.
The abutters and the thing. The developer agrees to remove all vegetation at his cost along the side property line of Allen starting from Brentwood Road to the rear Allen property corner 100 plus or minus feet, C plan attached. The developer agrees to install at his cost a five-foot decorative fence, gray or green, that will remain the, will remain the property, I'd assume it means remain on the property of the two new lots it serves and the responsibility of the two future lot owners to maintain. The fence will start at the front home corner of the house and end at the rear property corner approximately 70 feet of new fence. The developer will also plant on his property landscape screening as needed.
Dave?
Yeah.
On that bullet, I think your interpretation is not correct. I think that they're saying that the fence is still the property of the lots that it sits on, not on the property.
But it says that will remain the property of the, oh, oh, I got you, I'm sorry.
You know what I mean?
Yep, sorry, sorry. All right. I'll just read it as is.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's a little bit, I see what, I see how you could come up with that, but yeah.
I read it quick, I, I got it. The actual paved driveway is estimated to be 14 feet to 16 feet wide as per the approval of the town within the 40-foot access point. It is agreed both the Allens and the LaMontagne will sign a formal release deed as attached to any rights that they may have had in the 40-foot access area and that their present driveway access is over their property frontage that presently services their homes. The developer and lot owners agree that these terms can be made part of the formal decision of the planning board to be certain they get done. The sketch plan and attached shows the work agreed to by the developer and all costs associated with this agreement are the developers and the parties agree if releases are needed from the mortgages of the access area, they will cooperate.
One question. The fourth of the bullets. It is agreed that the Allens and LaMontagne will sign a formal release deed as attached. Now, I'm not quite sure, I don't see that.
No, we don't, we don't have that.
No, no, I, Joe Falzoni, the developer?
Yes, Joe.
Those deeds got executed when we signed it. Went to my attorney and are gonna get recorded. They're just agreeing that they don't have rights to pass and repass over it. So I didn't include that. It's already been done in accordance with the agreement. But there'll be, there'll be public record and recorded at the registry of deeds. But this says will sign a formal release deed as attached.
Yeah, these were signed over a month and a half ago.
Right. So we have that.
It was attached to this letter.
Attached to what?
It was attached to that, it was attached to the email that they sent to that. It was attached.
It's an email.
All right, okay.
He's right.
Oh, he is?
Yeah.
I know. He is.
Somehow, if they've been recorded, it seems maybe book and page should be listed. Do we know that or? Haven't been recorded yet.
They are probably gonna be recorded as a condition of this approval, I would assume. If it doesn't get approved, it doesn't happen.
Here we go.
Do we even need this bullet? Can we just strike it from this planning board approval?
I was gonna suggest, for the record, Mark Johnson, I represent the applicant. This was executed back in December. So certain things have happened since then. I think what it makes sense would be to strike that condition in what's being recorded. It's confusing. But that was just, just part of the understanding. But I think, I, I think it makes sense just to strike the condition of the deed in what's gonna be part of the decision, so there's no confusion.
Are the other parties here? Can you speak to it? Are you okay with that?
In that way, there's no confusion, somebody reading it. But, but part of it is a delay between a date that just was executed and today.
I agree with that.
Strike it.
Strike the fourth bullet.
Yep. And I'm gonna strike the fourth bullet on the next one, too. Thirteen, so that was 12. Thirteen, the seven bulleted conditions listed in a document with the handwritten date of 12/17/2019 and signed by Joseph Falzoni and Jonathan and Alyssa Frank and attached here to, shall be fully incorporated here and and be conditions of this approval. And I'll read it. The developer agrees to install at his cost a five-foot decorative fence, gray or green, as shown in the attachment that will remain the property of the three lots it serves and the responsibility of the three future lot owners to maintain. The fence will start at the front property corner and end at your rear property corner as shown in the attachment. The developer will also plant on his property landscape screening. The developer agrees to deed the area 1,500 plus or minus square feet as shown in the attached plan to the franks along the rear property line. The actual paved driveway is estimated to be 14 to 16 feet wide as per the approval of the town with the 40-foot access point. The developer and lot owners agree that these terms can be made part of the formal decision of the planning board to be certain they get done. The sketch plan attached shows the work agreed by the developer and all costs associated with this agreement are the developers and the parties agree if releases are needed from the mortgages of the access area, they will cooperate. And I'm gonna get back to the, that, and I have a question on those, but just let me finish the conditions of approval.
One thing, if, I'm not sure how to say last name. Is it Frank? Are you okay with us striking number four? Okay, thank you.
Well, while we're on this, I mean, I, you know, now that I think about it, I mean, I don't wanna be in a situation where down the road 10 years from now, the five-foot decorative fence is in, you know, what some, what somebody may think is in disarray and needs to be maintained and comes to the town and we're gonna have to try to enforce that. So I would say that I would expect that any deeds with the maintenance documents and so forth include the maintenance of this, so it can be a civil matter and the town doesn't get involved.
They are maintaining the property owners. The land, the new landowners, new homeowners are gonna have the ownership of that section of the fence. It does say that.
No, I understand that.
Yeah.
But this scenario, 10 years from now.
I hear you.
They come to me and say, hey, I went over and told those three lot owners to repair their fence and they said no.
Right.
And now they're using the town because it's a condition of approval to go and enforce and make a decision on, on the thing. I, I wouldn't wanna get involved in that. I would want that to be
The remedy is to make that part of the?
Included in any.
Homeowners.
Can you do that, Mr. Johnson? Like, include that in any? Okay, thank you.
You may want to put in a condition that the town may but does not have an obligation to enforce. If you're concerned about that happening down the line.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, yeah, I'll, to the conditions of 12 and 13 above.
It does put the abutters in a tough position, I think, in that regard.
Yeah.
What are you gonna do?
Well, I'll just say the town will have the right, but not the obligation to enforce the conditions of number 12 and 13. So, as, as that will be, you know, the 14th condition. So let me, let me get through them. The other one, the builders shall take all precautions to protect the 22-inch oak located at the southern tip of the manwayed wetland on lot 93-5. 16, three, eight-foot minimum height evergreen tree shall be shown on the final plans to screen lot 93-5 from lot 63-86.
A point of clarity, and when you started entering the, the agreed-upon items we discussed, you spoke about seven in both cases and we've limited one of those.
Oh.
So you probably wanna say six in those two situations.
Six. Six.
Details.
Yep, thank you. I think that covers it.
What about saving the tree?
I put it.
Did you get it in there? All right.
Yeah.
I missed it. They didn't. I heard adding three.
I don't know what number it is, but it's there.
It's 50.
Gotta remember the trees, you know?
Okay. Let's see.
He's second.
Somebody made a motion, we need a second. Oh, John made the motion.
It is.
We need a second.
We already seconded it.
John was just gonna approve it. He didn't even want conditions. Get some people excited.
Okay. Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I have a quick question.
Call for voice, excuse me, Pete, Peter?
And it relates to condition number eight, I think, where you referenced the utility and drainage plan.
Yep.
And because on the subdivision site plan, it shows the house location for 93-5 as possible house location, and I'm wondering, given the drainage analysis that you guys did, are you locking in those house locations? Because I presume some of your drainage analysis was based on where the houses are.
Not specifically where they are, just their roof, I'm sorry.
Yeah, step to the microphone, sir. Oh, Christian, that was close.
I know, it was very close. Not specifically, Pete, where they are located, you know, pinned to where that is. But just the fact that they can be tweaked a little bit as long as those stone drip edges stay with them, as long as it doesn't interfere with the grading of the swale. You know, they, they do have some flexibility with regard to location on those, so I think the, the phrasing of it as, as possible locations is appropriate. What this says to me, the, the eight, is that that they did block it in with that utility and drainage, but if they're gonna change it, they have to come and show us what they're changing and why they're changing it. So to make sure it all flows to the same. So if they're gonna orientate the house the other way, they can because it's, it, it's a possible location. But everything still needs, we need to be made aware of that. So everything drains the way it's proposed on this utility and drainage analysis.
Great, thank you.
Good question. Okay. And then I'll call a question. Those in favor of the motion with, as presented, please indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. Thank you. Thank you for your patience, your time, your thoroughness. Let's see now. All right. Mr. This. The driveways.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Hey, take care of yourself. Happy New Year. Yeah, yeah, it's 2020, man.
Okay. Other business.
Take care.
On the 27th, which is our next meeting, the question is, should we cancel that meeting? Because it's school vacation. Does that mean it's a board?
You won't be here. That's, so, I'll be here.
I'm available.
I'm available. Got no life.
There's no chairperson, I'll be here.
You're the only one.
May, may I just say, there's no application spending? There's a few in here, but none of them wanna be on the 27th. Now that you've adjudicated both of these, there is no agenda items unless you want them. I will be out of town. I did have Kristen Murphy cover if, in the event you wanted to hold the meeting. So I can have staff here.
I mean, I'm off for a night off, but I could be here if.
But there are no applications.
Okay. So it looks good. Let's take a little, let's take a little holiday.
That's unusual.
Well, sometimes things line up. All right.
What, do you need a formal something with it?
No, no, just let Barb know. Consensus?
No notice.
Chairman says we have consensus to cancel the meeting on the 27th of 2020. Because of school vacation. Gotta give an excuse, right?
Yeah, yeah.
In case this goes to court.
That's right.
So be it. Now, our favorite topic, master plan discussion.
The master plan committee is discussing when to have a meeting.
That in and of itself.
It's been going on for, since our last meeting.
Takes up more time than an actual meeting.
We had a meeting tomorrow until we found out today was next Friday.
You read the minutes from our last planning board meeting?
Does this committee need a little leadership? Do you need the chairman to just tell you when to meet?
Apparently.
Did?
Yeah, we try to do that every time.
Yeah, I know, but we can't.
We have to get back to the last Friday of the month or whatever.
Yeah, we can't do the first Friday because that's housing advisory committee. There'll always conflict and Pete and I are both on that.
So what was your honor with tomorrow?
It's the first or whatever.
Oh, wait a minute. It's the last.
It's the second. It's the second.
It's Valentine's Day.
You wanna work with Nico?
Well, maybe, maybe that's why. Wait a minute.
I heard you say 17 emails for an hour meeting.
Yeah.
We've already spent more time on email.
We'll schedule, we'll schedule and.
No, it's next Friday. You already said it today.
Make it for the 28th. Because I know you're not gonna be there.
And neither were you.
Exactly. Neither will they. Oh, come on.
All right.
Precedent's been set. So needless to say, not a lot has happened with the master plan oversight committee since our last meeting.
But I will give it one that to, the month, the mixed-use neighborhood development is on the warrant for the March, which we won't meet again until the 12th. So it'll be after the vote. That was, that's going forward. That's to fulfill a goal of the, several goals of the master plan for infill development, affordable housing. So hopefully that will, that's on the ballot and will pass on March 10th.
Good. We'll watch it with curiosity. And we still need some discussion sometime to pick up the discussion when we're talking about that in terms of Lincoln Street, but I think we need to see how this happens first.
See how the vote goes.
Yeah. Oh, we'll see how the vote goes.
Yeah.
That's what I would, yeah.
Yeah.
And then see how you wanna proceed with the Lincoln Street.
Our town planner's starting at the program because he has a little thing about a TAP grant that he asked to add to to our agenda because he's looking for a recommendation.
The, thank you, I'll, I'll be brief. I mean, the, we all know, probably everyone, I assume, knows about the Transportation Alternatives Program grant to connect sidewalks that I got back in 2017. And it was federally funded, so they just take two to three years to get to construction.
Put the money there.
I mean, here it is, 2020, but we're actually on time. We're right on the schedule I anticipated and I said we probably will go to construction somewhere in, you know, spring, summer 2020, and that's what we're on. But it went, and just, just a little background for anyone who's listening. The, the project connects three existing sidewalks. On Spring Street, there's a couple of breaks right here, right over here in town, across from the post office down, that goes down to Water Street where the PA bookstore is. There's two sections of sidewalk that are missing. We're gonna, that never were there. Well, maybe they were, you know, 100 years ago, but they're not there now, so we're gonna connect those. So it'll be one continuous sidewalk from Court Street to but they're not there now, so we're gonna connect those, so it'll be one continuous sidewalk from Court Street to, um, Main Street, Water Street. And the second section is Winter Street. Winter Street has a sidewalk, and it ends at Whitley, and we're connecting, we're continuing that sidewalk on Winter from Whitley to Epping Road, and then putting a crosswalk across there to the park, the Park Street Common Area. And then the third piece of sidewalk is, right now, the sidewalk on the, uh, west side of Epping Road ends at Brentwood Road, Route one-eleven, and we're continuing it from there up to the sidewalk that the planning board required for eighty Epping Road, that is, kinda starts and ends along their frontage, and this will at least connect there, so then the sidewalk will be continuous on Epping Road until the end of the frontage on eighty Epping Road. Uh, but when we did the survey, we realized we needed a handful of easements, temporary and permanent, and as part, uh, I got the sign-off on the last landowner, uh, last week to sign off on the easement, so I have all the landowners on board, they're all, uh, supportive of the project, and they've all signed the offer and agreement that we've offered them for the easements. But state law requires, RSA forty-one fourteen A, that I included and highlighted the relevant portion that the select board can only acquire or sell land after they submit any such proposed acquisition or sale to the planning board and to the Conservation Commission for review and recommendation by those bodies. So, I went to the Conservation Commission on Tuesday night, they gave me their recommendation, they had no objection to acquiring the easements. So, that's why I'm here to ask the board for a recommendation. My plan is to go and have the first public hearing at the select board this coming Monday.
Tuesday.
Uh, Tuesday, I'm sorry, Tuesday, the eighteenth, and then the, it has to have two public hearings, and then you have to vote not less than seven days or more than fourteen days after the second public hearing, it's very regimented. Uh, I don't really necessarily believe the state law thought of this type of thing, like a temporary construction easement for a sidewalk. I think it was a little different intent, but we talked to town council, and they felt that, you know, it was best just to go through this process. Um, I can't disagree with that. So, I have the plans, I'll go briefly through them, uh, the first set, uh, sheet one, the, it's a colored easement plan. You all have those?
Yes.
It's a little triangle, there's a red and a blue tri, it's a red with a little blue tip. The blue tip is fourteen feet of, uh, acquisition, land acquisition, and then the red is the, uh, permanent easement that will only ever be used, 'cause you can see the dark line is the curb. The red will only ever be used to access in the event we ever reset that curb or reconstruct it. So, it'll just be, you know, lullabies, and it's sixty feet, um, sixty square feet, so it's small. Second page.
That's just changing the curb there, right?
Yeah, it's changing the curb to allow for, uh, of, right now, they mount the curb, an eighteen-wheeler's come around there, and they mount it, and it's getting muddy, and then D P W or somebody poured some cement in there, so it wouldn't happen. But we're just taking that curb and moving it back, uh, which is onto their property, uh, to, so that they won't have to mount the curb anymore. They'll be able to, you know, drive, uh, make that turn without, with, with staying in the paved roadway.
Thanks.
Uh, sheet two is Winter Street, you'll see the, the red is the permanent easement. It bumps out a little bit around the Catch Basin, uh, this is Winter Street. One of these owners was actually the one that proposed this project, that wanted a connection from Winter Street, um, so everyone seems to be happy with, that we're moving forward with this. The red is the permanent easement, and then you'll see at the corner, the green is we need a temporary easement, and that's only because, uh, if we don't get that, and we don't grade it appropriately, the water will puddle uh, in the lawn where a sheet flows off now, but we'll put a sidewalk that will act as like a little mini dam, and then we gotta change the, chase the grade up a little bit in the yard, so it, it sheet flows over, um, over the lawn, onto the sidewalk, and onto the roadway like it does today. Uh, and then the third sheet, this is Spring Street, shows a temporary easement, uh, to, to slope easement, so we can work and, and grade it out there, there's gonna be like a little bit of a steeper slope, 'cause there's a hill there that we have to take down. Uh, then you'll see a little box, a red box, that's right in front of the P A bookstore, that's to install. That was originally outside of the, uh, project limits, but we decided to put a handicapped ADA accessible tip down there, because there isn't one, it's like a ten, ten-inch curb reveal that you have to step over now, so we added that. So, we, we need an easement to do that, and, and to maintain it. And then you go down further, there's a red, uh, strip, that's for retaining wall, that's pretty steep. We're gonna have to put in a back wall, back curb there, uh, and the sidewalk, and then there's a little square there further down that's on the, uh, um, Independence Museum property that we're gonna need to have the tip down and maintain if we ever need to. So, I would ask, if you have any comments, questions, happy to answer them for you, it's simply giving a recommendation. I did send a, uh, send out a motion that you could use, that you have no objection. You can either have no objection, or you could say, great, I, we want this to happen, and, and recommend that the select board acquire. Uh, either one would be.
On review.
Would satisfy.
Five standards, no.
Now, there's no way of a criteria to me.
What's going on, just to read it anyway?
Sure. Anybody like to make a motion?
Mr. Chair, I just have a quick question, and this is just a general design question for Dave. Are there, um, any utility pole relocations happening as part of this?
Yep.
There are.
Yeah. Yeah, there's a few.
Some of the utilities being shown like right in the middle of the sidewalk.
Yeah, that's not.
That's being moved?
Yeah, yeah, they all, they all meet, there's a cou, there's one where it was really tricky on Epping Road, and we ended up putting it right behind the curb, but we still maintain the thirty-six inches wi, of width for clear
Yeah.
path of the ADA. There's none in the middle of the sidewalk.
Okay, alright, it's just this plan is showing one right in the sidewalk, so.
Yeah, that, that.
It stood out to me.
Yeah, that, this is probably just an easement plan, I mean, that's what this plan is for.
It's like a, it's like an existing condition that isn't showing the relocation.
No. No, there's, there's, there's a couple on Epping Road, there's, there's a few.
Okay, that's what I figured.
Dave, is there any more of these pending?
What do you mean?
Any other?
Uh, not this year.
Improvements like this from the TAP, or is this it?
This is it.
This is it, yeah.
This is the TAP grant, it's about six hundred thousand dollars. It's those three sections. Um, eighty percent, you know, federal funding, so the feds are picking up, you know, eighty percent of it.
Yeah.
We're, we're matching the, like, the warrant was like one, one oh eight, one oh nine. Uh, we gotta go out to bid here, that's, that's why I wanna get to the select board, get these signed off on, we got the easements, go out to bid and see what happens. Hopefully, we'll be within, if we're not, we might have to figure out how to provide additional match funding, 'cause that's what a lot of these, when you estimate them, three, three years later,
Yeah.
you go out to bid, you know, and they don't allow contingency, they don't allow you to put in an escalation knowing that you're gonna construct in three years and say, hey, can we, you know, pass, you know, they don't, so, but, um, no, nothing, this is it, this is the, hopefully be construction.
I was just curious, I think it's good to see improvements to the town infrastructure. Um, if everybody's satisfied, I'm willing to make the motion.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to speak. For the people on my right.
Real quick, I mean, I strongly support this, especially the Winter Street to Epping Road connection there, I live around there. I'd, I'd do, I'd be interested down the line how you're gonna make the crosswalk safe across Epping Road there, because that's a tough intersection, as you probably are aware, um, but I, we can cross that.
Well, I'll answer, I mean, it, it's the engineer, we, he designed it, and, and the state, um, since it's federally funded and the state reviews it, um, I wouldn't say st, yeah, they kinda required a rapid rectangular flashing beacon. So, it'll be lit, we're putting in a, we're, we're hanging a, um, a cobra arm off the existing utility pole that matches up with specs to light one side of the crosswalk. Crosswalk's gonna be about seventy-five feet north of the Winter Street intersection. It works there, we're using an existing utility pole to light the, uh, the east side. The west side, we're gonna put in a pole and a light, so that there'll be two overhead lights, you know, on either side of the crosswalk, and then there'll be motion-activated, uh, re- rectangular rapid flash beacon crosswalk, just like the P A ones that burn so.
Alright.
That's good, that's great.
That's a step in the right direction.
Yeah.
They're motion-activated or button activated?
I mean mo, I'm sorry. P A's motion-activated.
Yeah.
These are, the, these aren't gonna be motion-activated, 'cause every time the wind blows, they, they go off, and then leaves go by at night, they'll come on randomly, uh, that won't happen. Yeah, you have to physically push the button. Active, not passive, not motion, thank you for that.
Great, thank you.
Now, as you were saying.
Alright. Upon review of the easement plans completed by Hoyle, Tanner, and Associates, and as presented by the esteemed Exeter Town Planner, Dave Sharple's regarding the installation of sidewalks on a portion of Epp, hey, it's my motion, Epping Road, Winter Street, and Spring Street, I move that the planning board has no objection to the town acquiring said easements to complete the transportation alternatives program project.
No motion, you may not get a second though.
Does anybody want a second then?
And do I get a second on that?
I'll second it.
Oh, Dave, you got another friend.
Okay. Any discussion? Voice vote, please. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Objections? I mean, abstentions? Motion carries, this is an exciting project, and it, I tell you.
Lot of work on that one.
Sitting on the, on the Rockham Planning Commission, some of these things, you know, start ten years ahead.
Me, isn't it?
And, uh, there was a, uh, one twenty-five curves down there in Kings, uh, not Kingston, Kensington.
Yeah.
And there was an expansion plan there, and ten years, it was approved and worked on. And then it got that close and said, we don't need it, so that money could've gone to another project, at any rate.
Interesting.
Takes time, doesn't it, with Gwen, and the, the money is just unbelievable. Thank you very much. Um, any field modifications?
What's there? No, that's coming to you. You'll see it in March.
Okay.
Yeah, there, there was one, but they wanna remove a bus shelter, and I can't, I don't have the authority to do that. Maybe I have the authority to do some, one, one part of their request, but you'll see it.
Okay. Any announcements? Other than have a nice Valentine's Day tomorrow.
I'm sorry.
Whoops.
I've been asked by a member of the public.
Yes.
About the, um, construction work going across from the Shell Station on, um, I guess that's High Street? No.
No.
Whatever street that is, it's Epping Road.
Main Street.
No, twenty-seven.
Main Street.
Main Street at that point.
Main Street, alright. I've been asked, what the hell's going on? Why is that so big?
Because they've sent a construction. It was approved by this board.
And I said, it, it was approved. It met all of the conditions, well, this did not satisfy a, um, a resident who views this as a, um, almost a dereliction of our duty for not, um, attending to it fitting within the neighborhood. Now, I merely bring this up because it's been mentioned to me, not much, and I said, it's an approved plan, and you, to this particular, um.
Individual?
Individual. They, or he is, she is, uh, finding, um, a great concern. I merely put it out because I thought at one point there was an issue as to whether, in fact, where the, where you measured to the height of the, um, of the structure. Was it the original ground, or was it this little, um, buildup?
That, that building is hot, taller than we thought it was going to be.
Yeah.
Yes.
By at least five feet.
No, it's, it is.
And then?
No, it, it is, it, uh, when it first, we're not, looking at it, when they first put the roof on, um, we're like, wait a minute, it's thirty-five feet. Uh, so, that looks more than thirty-five feet. And then I pulled the building permit plans, the, the, some, the plans that were submitted to get the building permit, and the architecturals show forty feet, so they built it five feet higher than zoning allows. And, uh, Doug Eastman notified the property owners of, of it, and they have to resolve it. So, it was, but, but it is, it is, it is, uh, thirty-five feet, and they built it to forty, but also, the, it's the average grade around the building, it's a little funky, everyone does it differently, um, but it's, uh, but we say to the, to the ridge line, a lot of places say to like the halfway up the roof line, so it can actually be forty feet, but meet a thirty-five-foot height requirement, a lot of towns do that. Like, that's not the actual height, we have the actual height, it's thirty-five, that was built at forty, Doug Eastman is addressing it with the property owner.
Didn't you tell us, though, that some of, that Doug thought forty was acceptable?
No.
Last, okay, last month, I thought you said something that, maybe.
That's good to know.
So, how do they address that? Change the pitch?
I, I know, it's a, it's a, it's an enforcement matter, um, code enforcement's dealing with the property owner. That's all.
Wow.
'Cause that's what I asked him, he said, I said, he's like, no, I've been talking with the property owner, they're gonna have to, I think they're gonna try to get an equitable waiver from dimensional requirements, uh, that, but I'm not involved in that. But I think we approved it, the, the, the plan said thirty-five-foot height requirement, uh, but when they submitted the building permit, the architect may have made a mistake thinking that, you know, a lot of towns do measure height differently, and forty, a forty-foot high building can meet thirty-five-foot height requirement. Even though that sounds weird, it, it is, um, so they, they, I don't know, I don't know what happened, but Doug is dealing with it and it's an enforcement matter.
Okay, that's under review.
Uh, I, uh, stay tuned.
Sounds like the Wizard of Oz to me. Pay no attention to the man behind the curtain.
Yeah, that's it.
It's really thirty-five feet.
Of course it is. Yeah.
From somewhere.
No, it's, it's forty. It was, uh, when I pulled the building permit, 'cause I, I, I looked at it when it went, I was like, that's, that doesn't look like thirty-five feet. That's what's allowed in the zone.
Even thirty-five is gonna look big, though.
Well, but. Yes, sometimes things definitely look big when they go up.
They do.
Um, and it takes a little while to, to, especially with height, I think I mentioned that, going through height.
Yeah.
It takes a little while to, you know, to get used to something.
Well, get ready for it.
And now they got the wall up.
This is an infill town at this point.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I mean, that's, it is pulled up to the road, it matches all the, the, the front setback lines of the, of the roadway. I've heard people say that, but I, I'm like, it was too, you know, set it back, I'm like, well, all those houses, if you drive up there, they're all close to the road on both sides, I mean, there might be one or two that's setback, but that's pretty much the, the frontage of that street is.
That was not the frontage, it was the height.
Yeah, but any of those ones, any of those two stories.
It's so massive.
Well, any of those two stories can go to thirty-five.
Yeah, it's a personal thing, if, if the first, the front building had been a little lower, the back two buildings could've been whatever height.
Yeah.
Right.
It could've gone to sixty, they could've, yeah. Put the attic and someone else's building.
But any of those existing buildings that are two stories could become three.
Right.
You know, someone could add an addition tomorrow, and you could be thirty-five feet, which is still five feet difference, because we're talking about a forty-foot building, not thirty-five, but, uh, you know, in the zone, that, that's, thirty-five feet's allowed, and a lot of those buildings around there are not thirty-five feet.
Right, right.
So, they're not as high as they could be, so that kinda makes it look a little, uh, big. Well, I just, I wanted to pass on that, uh.
Thank you.
I'd gotten, and I'm gonna get nailed again.
Tell your wife we said hi.
Nope. Not so.
As a footnote.
That I could take care of.
As a footnote, I believe you're gonna get calls like that when this twelve front street.
Over that's another.
Structure is gonna go up. You drive by there, and it's not gonna fit the neighborhood at all. Oh, it's gonna be awful. But anyway.
Well, okay.
That's my prediction, Pete, yes.
On a very different subject, and I, Dave, I don't know if you're, if you wanna even touch this or not, but in our last packet, we got the letter from some folks, um, a couple of whom are on the Rockingham Planning Commission from Northampton.
Oh, yes.
It's about this, the appeal board, for the housing appeal board.
Yeah.
Do you, I got an, and I can send this to everybody, um, but I, I think there is a hearing in Concord on the eighteenth, which is next Tuesday, and I just, I didn't know if people wanted to weigh in, um, with a state rep on that or not, and you may not wanna just.
Weigh in on what, what is the latest? I mean, they passed it, and now they wanna repeal it, right?
I think that's.
They wanna repeal the housing. They wanna repeal the housing.
I think so.
Court of Appeals.
So, just let it, okay.
And, and I think that they're hoping maybe to establish a, a review of the concept that they was, that that whole thing started on, which was affordable housing. That is how I understand it.
Yeah, and I think the repeal bill, um, actually establishes a Affordable Housing Commission, which is what the original Housing Appeal Board was trying to get at, but it really didn't target.
It went south in the process.
Affordable housing, it, it was an appeal board for any housing project, yeah.
Yep.
It was a way to try to, well, the intention of it was to allow quicker appeals through the process and provide an alternative to Superior Court.
Yes.
Uh, I testified on that, in that, uh, at that hearing when it originally was. And, and I, I just said that I thought it might have unintended consequences because some people viewed it as, oh, you know, developers will be able to get right through and, and, and appeal and so forth. Uh, I saw that cutting both ways, that people, anybody that, you know, because right now, you have to be represented by an attorney to go to Superior Court. They will not allow you to self-represent. Uh, Housing Appeal Board, you can. So anyone with, you know, anyone can just, I appeal it, you know? Just write a letter to the Housing Appeals Board. So I, I thought it could increase appeals on both, both, from both parties. Um, but I, I didn't know, they were looking for an alternative way to, because the Superior Court system's not, is not a land use court, but that's where it goes, it goes to, you know, they're dealing with a lot of other things, you know? Uh, you know, driving offenses, criminal activity, and then they got, you know, these random land use cases. They wanted to try to at least housing, at least ones with housing, go to this Housing Appeals Board. I mean, I, I guess, I was on the N H, I am, I am on the New Hampshire Planers Association Legislative Committee. Um, and kind of we were just like watching it, you know, like, okay, we don't know, we'll see how it works. If, you know, in the past, we'll, we'll see how it works, but now they're thinking about appealing it, repealing it, uh, so they won't have it and leave it with the Superior Court.
Anything else for the good of the order? Ken?
Quick, housekeeping item, so, um, I, um, emailed Barb and Dave kind of as a, and Lang as a housekeeping item last week, um, to request that we can receive our packets digitally because I hate having just all this paper. I just can't, I don't know, I, it's too much paper, um, for me, I, I just, I work digitally and, um, so anyway, so Barb was very kind to scan the whole packet this week and that's why she attached it in the email. Um, so I just wanted to, Lang, you said maybe we should discuss it.
We certainly can.
I don't know if there's any, any need for discussion, um, I mean, I, I have asked Barb if she could send the original PDFs instead of scanning all the PDFs because number one, scanning everything is more work for her, and number two, the scans, the quality of the scans are degraded from the originals.
Yep.
Um, and they get a little messed up, like one of them, I think, was folded and it never got unfolded, so the scan came through funny. Um, and I think everyone has to submit their applications digitally, is that correct or?
Correct, that's what we asked for. Sometimes we don't get everything, but we, we've been working on this for a while and our goal is to move toward what, you know, you asked for. I mean, that's where we're moving, that's why we started requiring them digitally. Uh, the issue becomes if we're gonna start sending them the individual PDFs, we wanted to also put them on the website, so we gotta scan them anyway into one document.
Well, you could just combine the PDFs into one document, you don't need to scan it. You could take all your PDFs in Acrobat and just make it one.
If you have that, if, we just have Reader.
Okay.
But.
There's gotta be some other software.
Yeah, I'll, I'll look into it.
Yeah. It might be worth, like, I just, it would be less work for Barb and it would just be easier to, more legible.
Yeah, I, I tried, I talked to her about that, but the way she explained it, it seemed like it wasn't less work. Uh, but it was manageable, you know, you know, she's like, she pointed out these things to me, like, no, no, but I have to do that. And I'm like, oh, okay. And, so, but, but she can manage it, we, we can manage. I guess the bottom line is if people want it, want it digitally and don't want a hard copy packet anymore, let us know and we can accommodate that.
I don't want a hard copy.
I knew, we know that.
Okay.
Anyone else wants to go digital, but we can't, we don't supply, you know, laptops and so forth.
That's all, that's another way to save a tree, isn't it?
Right.
Well, it is, because otherwise we just have to make all of our applicants plant more trees.
So I, I said to, uh, Jen to go ahead and use her laptop tonight.
Yeah.
Uh, I'd rather have her do that than playing with her phone.
But that is the challenge, not having a laptop in front of you, a screen in front of you.
Yeah, I was talk, I brought that up to Russ today, because I thought we were talking about like having a, because it's not practical to buy, you know, individual laptops for all our boards and committee members.
No.
I was thinking, we're, we're exploring possibly having some set up here that, that are underneath, that, you know, you pull out and you sign in and, and then there's a drop box for a planning board or whatever. So, you know, they get used by everyone, so we have seven, you know, seven of them, uh, for use or something like that.
That's the next step probably.
Yeah, we're working on to get it, you know, to get there. But, I mean, in the meantime, we're gonna get, it doesn't necessarily save paper because we're still, the applicant provides the copies. Um.
It saves some paper and it saves postage too.
It saves postage.
Yeah, that, yeah.
Yeah, no, I mean, I mean, we still, we're still asking, i- if, if I'm confident, we'll probably just keep asking for the fifteen copies we asked for. You know what I'm saying, like?
Yeah.
They give the copies of everything and we just put, we don't make copies. You know, they don't just hand us one application and we make copies. Uh, they hand us fifteen sets of, you know, X, fifteen sets of Y, you know? Uh, but maybe if people are committed and definitely gonna stick with electronic, we could actually.
Reduce that.
Yeah, reduce the request to fifteen to twelve or whatever.
Now, remember, it's gonna have to have a coloring capability, right? So you can just click colors where, where you want it. I'd be quick coloring. I've talked to Sil about that.
So email me if you want, if you wanna try going electronic, just let me know.
So, thanks, thank you, Jen.
You're welcome.
It's kind of exciting bringing us up to speed.
For not minding me, right? My laptop.
Okay. Just remember, we do not have a meeting next two weeks from tonight. And, uh, we'll just enjoy tomorrow, get a lot of chocolate somewhere.
Be on March twelfth.
March twelfth.
Wow.
That's a long time.
Looking for a motion to adjourn?
Almost.
I move to adjourn.
Okay, let's adjourn. We stand adjourned, thank you very much, everybody.